Добрый день, добрый вечер, дорогие друзья! Прошу прощения за технические неполадки, мы снова с улыбкой опять на линии. У нас в гостях, и мы будем с вами работать сейчас, мы не будем с вами отдыхать, у нас в гостях Ина Верников (Iskwaer), означает что она адвоката в американской юридической системе, Ина кандидат в Нью-Йоркский Центр. Мы поговорим несколько минут на русском языке, а потом мы перейдем на английский, я вас предупреждаю сразу, чтобы потом не обижались. Это не будет очень сложно, оставайтесь с нами. Нам нужен кандидат, представляющий нас, который говорит на русском языке, но на английском говорит еще лучше, и это как раз тот случай с Иной Верниковой. Ина, добрый вечер!
Добрый вечер, Юра!
Дорогие друзья, я даю адрес здесь веб-сайта Иной Верников, можно туда пойти и сделать там то, что называется донэйшен. Я сейчас вставлю в чат ее прямой адрес там на веб-сайте, чтобы вы могли пожертвовать сколько вы можете для этой замечательной молодой женщины, которая бесстрашно выходит на встречу и с врагами, и с не-врагами в политической ситуации, и она дает так, что мало не покажется, честно говоря. Я был очень удовлетворен нашей встречи с ней на радио и в последствии на интернете здесь у меня. И надо сказать, что очень многие люди ко мне сказали: «Инна, если я обманываю, пусть она меня остановит», но очень многие люди сказали, что они увидели в программе этого молодого человека в красной шапке с надписью «Мага». Я прав, Иночка?
Прав, сто процентов!
Ина, скажите... Да конечно!
Каждый доллар, что мне отдают, государство дает мне восемь долларов. Так что если мне кто-то дает десять долларов, я получаю из этого девяносто долларов. До ста семьдесят пять долларов государство дает мне восемь долларов на каждый доллар.
Но это должен быть житель Нью-Йорка, да?
Да!
Если житель Нью-Йорка дает десять долларов, то Ина получает восемьдесят соответственно.
Да, правильно. Я отрионов Нью-Йорка.
Ина, как сейчас идет компания, трудно ли вам по сравнению с тем, что вы ожидали от этого всего?
Вы знаете, Юра, я не ожидала, что это будет так хорошо, потому что очень многие люди нравятся, я хожу по улице с людьми разговариваю, и как раз вот после того, как я была с вами на радио два раза уже, и я была на других русскоязычных станциях, люди меня узнают.
Как вы могли? Другие русскоязычные станции?
Да, и люди с удовольствием подписываются, люди берут мои флаеры, люди говорят, что будут голосовать за меня, и люди очень рады, что есть республиканский кандидат.
В прошлый раз, когда мы с вами говорили, у нас было интервью на английском языке, и хочу сказать, что, напомнить, что у нас был в конце разговор, что я вам дал домашнее задание. Я попросил вас подумать о трех вещах, первых которые вы сделали, сделайте, когда вы станете членом Горсовета города Нью-Йорка. У вас есть ответ сегодня на это?
Да, конечно! Is this a good time to switch to English?
Let's do it right now, we switch to English and then we'll have a chance again, maybe today or next time we'll say the same thing in Russian.
Okay, great. And you can help, you know, you can help translate. Okay, so, you know, my top issue, and obviously this is the first thing I plan on doing when I get into the city council, is to refund the police.
Самое первое дело – это возместить фонды полиции, восстановить рефинансирование полиции.
Right. We know how important it is to make sure that the police is funded, that the police is supported, and so this is my first task when I get into the city council, to refund the police. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hold events, I'm gonna hold press conferences, I'm gonna be a loud voice to, you know, to encourage and to pass a bill to refund the police. And by the way, you know, I think there is a misconception, there's a very big misconception, that the majority of Americans wanna defund the police, and especially when it comes to minority communities and black Americans, they wanna defund the police. This is simply not true, right? There was a poll done that showed that eighty-one percent of black Americans do not want to defund the police. And we know that the majority of the crime happens in areas where there are underprivileged individuals, there are minority communities, that's where the crime happens. And you know, the people who are encouraging this message, encouraging to, you know, to defund the police, they're the ones with all the protection, right? They're the rich ones, they're the elites, they're the ones who have private security, you know, and they're the ones who are rallying to defund the police.
Quite often they are troublemakers, by the way. They neither rich nor smart, they're just troublemakers who want to denigrate the law and order. Can I summarize what you said, and the first bullet point, that you are a law and order candidate?
Correct!
Ина, за закон и порядок, дорогие друзья, я не буду переводить все, что она сказала, но на русский язык, но чтобы вы знали, речь идет о том, чтобы в нашем городе, в наших краях, в нашем, в ее округе, в сорок восьмом округе Бруклин, районе Бруклина, о чем еще будем говорить, был закон и порядок, как мы этого хотим, как мы к этому привыкли и даже лучше. Please, go ahead.
And just to add to that, you know, the city council voted last July to defund the police, they voted on protest signs. Literally, a mob, you know, a mob came out and yelled, "Defund the police, defund the police", and they voted to defund the police. In reality, these people don't wanna defund the police, and you know that, because if I may refer you to an article from The New York Times, that came out in February, and you'll see that the candidates for mayor changed their position, and they no longer want to defund the police, because after they found out that the people actually, this is actually not what the people want. So it's very interesting to note that.
All right, and what's next? Now we've done that.
Sure, so, my next issue, which I think is very important right now to our community, is the homeless shelters. We discussed this issue with you numerous times before. So what I'm gonna do when I get into the city council, as it regards to the homeless shelters, is I'm going to fight these homeless shelters. We don't want these homeless shelters in our communities, in our neighborhoods, as we discussed before, this is a safety concern. These shelters are, you know, they wanna place them next to schools, and we know that there are gonna be problematic individuals who are gonna live in these shelters. We don't wanna see needles, we don't wanna see drugs a block away from our schools, right? And also, you know, in our district, these shelters are being proposed to be built in areas where they're going to decrease property values, and as I said before, I'm offering to have these shelters built in, you know, in areas such as next to government buildings, next to courthouses, areas that are not populated, that are not next to schools. So, you know, that's my proposal. What I'm gonna do is I'm going to appoint people, you know, to work for me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna appoint people to the community board. So the city council, a city council member has the power to appoint people to the community board. So what I'm gonna do is appoint individuals to the community board, who are going to oppose the building of homeless shelters in our neighborhoods. And on top of that, there are regulations that we can explore, that we can also use to fight these homeless shelters. I'm not gonna go into the details of the kind of regulations, but this is something that is also an option, on top of just appointing individuals to a community board, who are going to be opposed to these homeless shelters.
Один из важных вопросов, которыми занимается Ина Верников еще уже сейчас, это то, чтобы помешать строительству в приютов для бездомных возле школы. То, что сейчас затевает сделать город, это очень серьезная программа, и когда этот приют будет построен, если он будет построен, убрать его оттуда будет очень сложно, там находятся дети, там находятся дома, которые были построены для продажи, стоимость этих домов упадет, дети находятся там, потому что там огромная школа, это в общем такой момент серьезного трафика. Ина, я прав или нет, из-за границы нам нельзя присылать деньги, да, вам нельзя присылать деньги? You cannot take any foreign contributions?
I can take contributions from anywhere in the United States. It's just that if it's outside of New York City, it's not going to be matched.
Угу, то есть можно присылать деньги, если это из-за пределов Нью-Йорка, присылать деньги в Соединенных Штатов, друзья, я уже написал здесь, что деньги из Канады присылать сюда нельзя, придется их вернуть, и не придется их вернуть, это просто пустая как бы трата ваших денег, если вы не являетесь гражданином США.
But if I can offer, if they have relatives or friends who do live here, you know, they could encourage them.
Вы можете распространить, так сказать, слово об и нее, о том, что она живет здесь, если кто-то живет в Нью-Йорке, они могут сделать это пожертвование на ее компанию, сделать этот донэйшен, говоря по-русски, для того, чтобы она смогла распорядиться своим бюджетом более продуктивно. Пару слов на русском, и мы пойдем совсем deep dive. А, третий пункт у нас остался еще. We have the third part.
Yeah, so the third thing that I think is also very important is to, we have to safely reopen our economy, we have to safely reopen our small businesses. Our small businesses suffered tremendously during this pandemic. I'm a small business owner, I'm an attorney, I have my own practice for seven years. I know what it's like to work very hard to build it, you know, the first two years when I opened my practice, I was in my office until two o'clock in the morning every night, and I'm sure that every small business owner knows exactly what it's like.
Малый бизнес должен открыться поскорее со всеми предосторожностями, простите, со всеми предосторожностями, Ина сама владеет малым бизнесом, и первые два года были просто адом для нее, пока она не открылась, и она знает, как это важно, и она знает, что такое малый бизнес для нашего города, для нашего округа, для Бруклина, для Нью-Йорка, для страны, поэтому она за то, чтобы очень активно, агрессивно, но максимально с предельной осторожностью с соблюдением всех разумных норм и открыть бизнес, чтобы человек не был наказан за то, что он это сделал.
Right, and there's also, I can hear you, sorry.
Can you, I'm just not saying anything, I'm listening.
Okay, yeah, now I can hear you. So, there's also funding available for small businesses, and many people don't know where to get it, they don't know what programs are available. I'm gonna make sure that when I'm in the city council, that we provide people with the information, and that we help people actually get the funding that's available, and I'm gonna have staffers, I'm gonna have experts who know how to, you know, use these programs in the right way. So that's gonna be also one of my top priorities.
Также будет для тех, кто люди не знают о всех программах, которые существуют для малого бизнеса, как и связанные с коронавирусом, так и не связанные с коронавирусом, и будут специальные люди в штате Уины, которые будут людей направлять и обучать, и подсказывать, как им максимально получить ту помощь, на которую они могут рассчитывать благодаря законам, принятым как в связи с коронавирусом, так и с просто необходимостью развивать малый бизнес. Я добавлю от себя, что вообще вопрос малый бизнес – это то, что держит Америку на всех порах, это основа нашего капитализма, это далеко не самые огромные компании. Наш бизнес в основном весь американский является малым, и это в общем, по-моему, то ли семьдесят, то ли сто человек, если у тебя работает, ты все еще малый бизнес. То есть это серьезный момент для капитализации, серьезный момент для того, чтобы люди почувствовали себя комфортабельно в стране, те, кто работает на бизнес, а те, кто устраивает этот бизнес, кто рискует, кто идет вперед и ведет себя так, будто он хочет быть следующим Ван дер Билтом или следующим Морганом или следующим Карнеги, то этим людям тоже необходимо помогать, поэтому масса вопросов, конечно, возникает, но вот классовая борьба нам не дает жизнь спокойно. Ина, at this point, so you answered the three questions that I had for you. Thank you so very much. What I'm going to do next, I have a little video, and there will be some familiar faces, you won't see it most probably, but the viewers will see it.
Okay.
All right, it's less than a minute. You send it to me yourself.
Okay. Hi, everyone, this is Ina, candidate for City Council District 48. I'm here with Curtis Leewa, Republican candidate for mayor. Curtis, I wanna thank you for always standing up for my community, the Jewish community. When we were being attacked, you were always there, you're always there throughout the years, and I think that right now our city is in a crisis. We have two, what I see is two major issues right now. We have a fiscal crisis in our city, and we have a huge problem with crime. Do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
Sure, Ina, and there's no way the city recovers unless we have safe streets, safe subways, safe parks, and safe schools. So that's what I've dedicated my life to as leader of the Guardian Angels for forty-two years, and I believe in refunding the police, hiring more police, and letting them do their job. Then the recovery can take place. And in terms of our support for the Jewish community, you've seen us recently up in Riverdale. Thankfully, the person responsible has been caught, but the Guardian Angels have always been there for the Jews when they're under attack. And as mayor, I'll be there not only for the Jews, but for all people in New York City.
And we appreciate it so much, Curtis. June twenty-second, go out there and vote Republican. November second, vote Ina Vernikov for New York City Council. Thank you, everyone.
Pleasure.
So, tell us something about the spirit between the candidates, what's the relation? We have quite a few good candidates going into the battle to fight for us. What's your impression?
Yeah, I mean, we have great candidates, we have two Republican candidates. Curtis Leewa, Fernando Mateo, they're both candidates from the Republican Party. Curtis Leewa is endorsed by the Brooklyn GOP, the Brooklyn Republican Party, and Fernando Mateo is endorsed by the Manhattan Republican Party. And then we also have Bill Pipitone, who is endorsed by the Conservative Party. So, yeah, I mean, they're all great. Curtis Leewa, as I think you showed the video of that, because that's what I'm saying today. You know, he's great, he's been, you know, fighting crime in New York City for a very long time. He's also been very active on the antisemitism front. You know, every time there are attacks against the Jewish people in our community, he's always there, front and center. I believe it was about two years ago, him and the Guardian Angels, which is the organization that he had, they go to synagogues and patrol, right? They don't have weapons, but they go out there with their teams, and they patrol, they keep us safe, they keep our community safe. They're fearless, and they've been doing it for a long time. I think he's been doing this for something like forty years. And so he's a very much a law and order candidate. You know, Fernando Mateo, I think he's a business guy, he's great. I met him, I think, several times. And, you know, I have not met Bill Pipitone yet, so I can't say much about that candidate, but they're all great. And look, we have choices, right? We have choices, and June twenty-second is when people will have the opportunity to make a choice between Curtis Leewa and Fernando Mateo on the Republican front. So on that day, we're gonna know, and that day or later, we're gonna know who the Republican candidate is who's going to go against the Democratic, the winner of the Democratic primaries. And then in November, it's gonna be a Republican mayor candidate against the Democratic mayor candidate.
Let me interject here, I say Russian. Некоторые люди только что пришли сюда, друзья, мы пытаемся собрать, помочь Ине Верников собрать средства на ее компанию. В Нью-Йорксе она идет в Горсовет города Нью-Йорка, энергичная, очаровательная представительница нашего района, нашего districta, и если вы можете ее поддержать, находясь, будучи гражданами США или живущими в городе Нью-Йорке или на территории Соединенных Штатов, пожалуйста, я оставлю прямо сейчас сюда линк на страничку, где можно это сделать, дать двадцать пяти долларов ей донэйшен. Если вы являетесь гражданами, жителями Нью-Йорка, города Нью-Йорка, то восемь долларов на каждый доллар добавит ей город Нью-Йорк от собранных денег, потому что вы дадите, это имеет смысл, для Нью-Йорка очень большой. So, Ина, what's the other side? What does the other side look like? How do you estimate the opposition, the Democratic part?
Yeah, so we have, I think that the frontrunners, as I see it, I think it's Andrew Yang, you know, it's Eric Adams, and Ray McQuire. I mean, there are other candidates, but I think these are the frontrunners. Look, you know, we cannot vote for Democrats, you know, we discussed this numerous times. The Democratic Party of today is not the same Democratic Party we had twenty years ago. It's a party that's moving very, you know, extremely to the left, and we cannot support that party. On principle, we cannot vote for Democrats, because we see what the Democrats are doing to our country, we see what the Democrats are doing to our city. We have Republican candidates, we have options. We have to go out there and vote for law and order, for the free market economy, which the Democrats are trying to destroy. So that's how I see all the Democrats right now, you know.
Yeah, and whatever they say, the smarter of them say that you would for me, you don't vote for the issues. You know that I'm a good man, and I know they're a decent man, and you know that I will be a common sense Democrat, a common sense manager, but they have this terrible thing, which is the Bolshevik discipline. If somebody says from above, "Stand right here, don't move, toe this line", and they will toe the line. That's the experience with Democrats so far. They ruin totally trust that any decent person would associate with Democratic Party, to be honest with you.
Look, and you know, the issue is that even if we have a centrist candidate, a centrist Democrat, the problem is that the progressive left is going to move them to the left. They'll have no choice but to, you know, to be more progressive. Even if we see them as more centrist right now, and that's the issue, right? Some people might wanna vote for a centrist Democrat, but the problem is, they're going to have to, will have no choice, they will have to move to the left.
Yeah, that's where the party is right now, the Democrat party. And our party, the Republican Party, is a party of individual. We say, "I have my own ideas, I disagree with this Republic, I disagree with that Republic, I don't like Trump, I don't like, who else is there, Ted Cruz, this and that", and that doesn't help in terms of, you know, answering the challenge of this very coordinated attack by the Democrats on American values at this point, I think. They're seriously after the basics of American life. They wanna take your children, educate you with their brainwashing, they wanna rearrange the society in a way that people would... Andrew Young, I was listening to him in Ben Shapiro's program, and he was explaining universal basic income to Ben, his idea about it. And I understand, it's like you're paying people not to stay in the way, but he's not seeing it this way, he's just saying, I mean, not everybody would agree to be paid to stay in the way, just do not do anything, just, you know, like, sit here and don't touch stuff, because you're gonna ruin everything with your nasty habits. It's not like our society works like this, not at all. We don't have Chinese discipline, I'm sorry.
Look, it's the idea of handouts, right? The Democratic Party loves handouts, because what they do is they give handouts, instead of giving people opportunities to have a job, they give people handouts, and so then, in my opinion, they have a co-dependent relationship with these people that they give handouts to, right? They give them the handouts, and these people vote for Democrats in return, and then they give them handouts, and they vote for them in return, right? And I think this is how we're destroying our country. Instead of building up our economy, you know, encouraging people to go get a job, they're giving them handouts, and that's what I think UBI is all about. And it's a socialist concept.
And not to worry about growth, not about capitalism. Capitalism is a bad word, absolutely for them, and this is how this country is built. We had a program about Vanderbilt and Rockefeller the other day, on Friday, and I couldn't stop preparing, I was preparing for the program to speak with a very competent speaker, Alex Herlov, very famous veteran of journalism, in Russian-American journalism here. And I couldn't stop reading about those people, it was absolutely fascinating, and how it's twisted, how it's like people, they just insert into our children this hatred to these people, and those people basically, they fought by lowering prices. What else our people enjoy more than having a sale or lower prices to this and that? And Democrats, they only see prices to go up and higher and higher and higher. And as Art Laffer said, and I quote it often, that every dollar that comes into government, you only get back sixty-five cents off of it. It loses about one-third of it as it gets processed by the government, by the organizations, by the clerks, the paper pushers, et cetera, et cetera. So, that's of course a big problem with spending, and when you don't care about capitalism per se, the fact that people need to make money and get prosperous, to have the rise on the ball, so to speak. So, what do you think of the harshness of the tone, possibly? Do you feel already that there are struggles ahead, battles ahead, or so far it's just easy sailing, you would say? Everybody loves you?
Oh, I mean, look, I don't expect everyone to love me, but, look, it's been, it's obviously, you know, this is a lot of effort, I'm putting a lot of effort into this. And as I said before, you know, I'm doing this because I really wanna make a change. I don't need a job, I have a job that I love, but what I see happening right now, I can't let it stand. And I'm gonna do everything I can to, you know, to be the voice of the people. The middle class and the people need a voice that we don't have right now. And, look, I wanna give people a choice, right? There is no other Republican candidate, and if I hadn't run, then people would not have the option to be able to vote for a real Republican candidate. All they would have is Democrats to choose from, right? And so people need to have a choice. They need to be able to go to the ballot and make a choice between a Democrat and a Republican, and they need to be looking at the issues. And, you know, the majority of this district is a conservative district, and we are very much aligned with the values. And I would not have run in any other district, because I don't think that any other district here, you know, is aligned with my values, and I just, I wouldn't run that way. I'm running in this district because the people here agree with, align with my values and my principles, and what I wanna get done.
Forgive my ignorance, for how long people are elected to the New York City Council?
So it's usually four years, but this time the position is gonna be for two years.
Why?
I believe it's because of redistricting and, you know, different things that go on with the council, but so right now it's supposed to be two years.
Democrat games again. Okay, there's a question, if people wanna send you a check, what's the address?
Okay, they could send you a check to sixty-one Broadway.
Hold on, just a second. Let me type it in. In Vernikov? Sixty-one?
Sixty-one Broadway.
Hold on, typos are unacceptable. Sixty-one Broadway.
It's B-R-O-A-D-W-A-Y.
Okay.
Suite twenty-seven eighty, that's two-seven-eight-zero.
Two-seven-eight-zero.
New York, New York.
New York, New York, it sounds so nice, they named it twice. Zip code?
One-zero-zero-six.
Year six?
And you, they should address the check to Ina for Council 2021. And they might wanna know how to spell "counsel".
Yeah, I know, I know. Ina for counsel?
Counsel spells C-O-U-N.
Yes, I have no problem with that. I'm just typing it, it will be in the chat. Hold on. Hold on, I cannot insert it correctly in the right place. Okay. Ina for counsel on the check, right? Or something else after "counsel"?
Yes, it should be addressed to Ina for Council 2021, two-zero-two-one.
It should be on the check, right? Paid to.
Yes, sir.
Let me just, paid to, paid to. Sorry, friends, извините, нам нужно это сделать, потому что мы хотим так сделать. Ina for Council 2021, все. Now we have it. I'm sorry, if somebody is English speaking is listening to us, excuse our Russian, and the Russian speakers, простите, что мы говорим по-английски, потому что сегодня мы это так сделали, мы выйдем к вам по-русски, мы будем тренироваться. Мы купим специальную грушу боксерскую, такой перчатку. Мы купим специальную грушу боксерскую такую, перчатки, и будем на ней тренироваться. Inna. So there was a big event recently. It was a rally in support of, uh, Sarah Halimi. Can you tell about the story? Why, uh, was it, um, why did it take place in New York?
Yes, let me tell you. Let me tell you about what happened. So Sarah Halimi is a Jewish Orthodox woman who lived in France. Um, her neighbor, uh, in two thousand seventeen, her neighbor barged into her apartment, uh, yelled Allah Akbar. Um, he stabbed her several times with a knife. Uh, blood was gushing from her, uh, from her garments. He, uh, tortured her for hours, and then he threw her off her balcony. Okay, uh, this is horrific, horrific story that took place.
Was she alone in the apartment?
She was alone in the apartment. From what I understand and from what newspapers reported, was that the neighbor, uh, who was obviously an Islamist, uh, he got thrown off by her mezuzah that was on her door.
Uh-huh.
Um, and, you know, the, the mezuzah was bothering him. And so he barged in and he killed her in a, in a very gruesome way. And so there was a, so, so in France, the court decided that he, this man could not stand trial because he was, uh, high on weed. Okay, and so what happened recently was that there was an appeal, and the appellate court in France affirmed the lower court's decision that this man cannot stand trial, and so he's in a rehab facility. So.
And we're working on legalizing marijuana, which is the same, the thing that got him high, right? That's why he got schizoid, this man. We, in New York, we're calling marijuana recreational drug, and it's everywhere and anywhere. And in France meantime, in two thousand seventeen, a man kills a woman being high on, uh, cannabis, on marijuana, on, uh, hashish, whatever you call it, it's the same thing.
And by the way, there was another case in France where, uh, someone did this to a dog, and they went to jail for a year, and it was, it's under the same circumstances, where they were, the person was high. So basically, the law is that if you're insane, you can't, you can't stand trial. Uh, and the court defined being insane as someone who was high on drugs. Is that, is that fathomable? I mean, it's crazy.
Forgive my question, was the man who killed his dog a Muslim?
I don't know.
Because Muslims have aversion to dogs, uh, historically. It's, it's, you know, the story was the Minneapolis cabbies, who are mostly from Somalia, and they wouldn't let even service dogs into the, the cabs. I mean, that's, that's the reality, unfortunately. So this happened in two thousand seventeen, and recently there was a big rally in France too, right? Because this whole case is pretty much alive for, for the people, right?
Yes, very much alive for Jews all over the world, and I'm sure not just Jews. Uh, I mean, this is about justice, right? So there was a rally in France, there was a rally in other countries, and we, uh, recently did a rally in New York. It was organized by, um, former Senator Hikins, who now had an organization called Americans Against Anti-Semitism, which I am very much a part of. I run the women's division. It's called the Women's Committee for Americans Against Anti-Semitism. Uh, a- as you know, I've been very active on the anti-Semitism front for many, many years, uh, since my college days, and, uh, you know, and pro, and the pro-Israel front, anti-Semitism. Uh, and this is just something that we have to speak out about, and we have to make a big fuss, and we have to hold this man accountable. Because, I mean, it, it's, it's giving, it's sending such a message to the world that Jewish blood is cheap. So basically, if you kill a Jew, you can go free as long as you are high on weed.
New York used, is, I don't know the situation right now, but New York used to be home to the biggest Jewish population in the world.
Outside of Israel.
Outside of Israel, yes. So it's very important when this, this, this is how it is, you know? A lot of people, a lot of Jews made a big chunk of this town, uh, attractive. Jews were on Broadway, Jews were in fin- in the finance, in the real estate, in, uh, construction, Robert Moses alone. So anti-Semitism in New York is even more, it's unacceptable anywhere, of course. But in New York, it's kind of something that meets sometimes a hush-hush, uh, uh, treatment. Because people say, okay, there's a lot of us, so it happened someplace, okay, we know about it. It's many thousand years old, wasn't, didn't, uh, arrive yesterday, so we have to be tolerant, and a lot of Jews, by the way, they are tolerant to all those racial, uh, ruckus that we have currently. A lot of Democratic Jews are supporting what is going on by BLM and by, by Antifa, by the way.
It's, it's such a shame that so many Jews are, are progressive, and they support all these causes, and they are anti-Israel. Uh, you know, they're anti-Zionist, they're anti-Israel. I- it's a shame. And some of these places, these, the Jews are the ones, you know, heading these movements, uh, like J Street, right? Uh, J Street is anti-Israel.
This whole BDS thing is, is just, there are a lot of people who started it, were, were of Jewish attraction. But, uh, what to say to these people? We cannot kind of, uh, go for the throats, or should we? How, how do we, do we argue this case with them? Or we just should stubbornly go our way?
Look, I think we have to do our job. We have to speak up. Uh, you know, when we see injustice, we have to speak up. That's what I've been doing my whole life, my whole adult life. Uh, when I see something unjust, and by the way, not just, not just when it comes to Jewish causes, you know? Uh, anything, any injustice, this is why I became a lawyer. Um, because we need to speak up when we see injustice. Uh, if we stay silent, nothing's gonna get done. And there were so many times when we spoke up, things were changed, uh, and things were done, uh, right? Because if we stay silent, nothing's gonna get done.
Absolutely.
We have to try.
People like you, I, I hope, and I know that you see the big picture. Because once people are in New York, you should do everything to, for them, even if you're not in the government, not in the city council. You gotta do everything you can, reasonable, uh, for them to become New Yorkers. If they're in the United States, you, you should do everything as a citizen. It's better for yourself. If you make every effort for every person who came here legally, we don't know that. We don't know if they're legal or not, but general camaraderie, uh, general friendship between people. It's very important, whoever they are. We don't want those people to feel alienated, and we don't want them to impose things on us. So they, I mean, some people, we have a lot of Russian, uh, listeners and, uh, viewers on this program, and I love their questions. I love when they are open, et cetera, et cetera. But now they are, as a big chunk of them, not on my program, on my colleagues' program, they become very kind of, um, how would I say it? Ascetic, asci- asci- what's the word? I don't, they use so many, um, forgot this word. But they, they don't speak in good faith. They say, oh, America's over, and, uh, you, who are you to, to discuss Russian business, to, to, it's called Putin and socialism, even USSR, even talk about Stalin this way? When you have such a big, if you had this, if you had Stalin in America, everything will be, would be just fine. Just like this craziest stuff they say. But once people are here in this country, out of the United States, they can say whatever they want. I, I just don't care. I just marvel at it. I, I just marvel at some people's stupidity. But once they hear, they should become American, uh, Americans in their hearts first. And then comes everything else. It is no, 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 uh, makes no sense for us to have somebody who has American on paper, and in his heart, he hates this country. And we had, unfortunately, many, many cases when people who were legally here and coming from Central Asia, and they were front and center in so many very celebrated cases of killing people, drive plowing into crowd of, uh, peaceful, uh, joggers on, um, West Side Highway, if you remember the case few years ago. Uh, and that, the, recently in, in Williamsburg, there was a crowd of, uh, Hasidim into which a van backed out, backed up several times. Uh, so people, once they hear, they need to show their allegiance in their deeds. Because we, we gotta do, we be very, uh, clear about that. Unfriendliness and American behavior is unacceptable for those who live here.
You know, you know what I think the big problem is, uh, right now in America, the college campus? I think that students on the college campuses are indoctrinated to believe that America is a bad country, that America is a racist country, right? Um, and i- i- it's just, it's really pathetic because we have really wealthy, say, baseball players, right? Who make millions of dollars, who, uh, who say that America is a horrible country to live in, and it's racist, while making millions of dollars in America, while being able to say whatever they want in America, the only country where they could do that. It's, there's such hypocrisy with these people, right?
Imagine this, uh, absurd picture. Uh, you know the southern border is open, right? Basically, as of right now. And people are going through, over the southern border for a very long time. Not just during the Trump or Biden, as long as it's there. A lot of people from all over the world. And people, uh, they try to cross the, the, the border, the desert. They first go to, to Cuba, or on the, from there they get to Mexico, and from Mexico they get across the border. And quite a few people from Central Asia say, uh, they come this way. And there are people who would do this trek, who would come to Mexico from, say, Uzbekistan, or Turkmenistan, or Kazakhstan, and they would cross the border, and they would go across the desert, and they make it to Brooklyn, and they're illegal through and through. The kids go to school. And the kid comes to school, they tell the kid that, that this is a bad country. How does it jibe in anybody's mind? Minds explode when, when you hear things like this.
Yeah, and especially now, this country gives a lot of benefits to people who come here illegally. Um, and, you know, now, you know, Joe Biden's saying healthcare should be a right, right? Uh, you know, illegal immigrants should have a right to have healthcare. But what about our taxpayer dollars, right? What about Americans? What about, uh, you know, our country first? Uh, it, it almost feels like they have priority, the illegal immigrants have priority over American citizens. It, you know, I mean, that's not right.
To me, what clarifies what right should the person have is you have to have a free, uh, say, uh, health care, right? Health care. So for this, someone should work for free to give you free healthcare. You get it for free. So someone has to give it to you for free. Because you can have, if you can do healthcare for yourself, then you get it for free, of course. But if you want somebody to do it, that's how in Soviet Union, it was the same thing. If you want, you get free, uh, uh, say, free, free, uh, vacations, right? You go there, and somebody for very little money, stealing meat from the, from the restaurant, from the cafe, from the cantina, from the kitchen, and they do it for like sixty rubles a month, they, they, they cook it for you, and the rest they steal from the kitchen. That's how it used to be. And same thing, look at every right they offer you, free, uh, free education. Okay, who's gonna teach you for free? A guy from his homeless shelter that teach you for free. They can do it. Or, or, uh, the, the train conductor can teach you for free, cause a wreck. You know, a fisherman on, on the shipside bay can teach you for free, the, the, uh, it, you see what I'm saying? You cannot get quality anything if you don't hire people to do it for you. Nobody in our system is obliged, obligated to work for free. That's why you cannot have those things for free. Nobody's against you. Nobody wants to harm you. Nobody wants to say that you're worse than anybody else. It's just not feasible. Let, so, rich people should pay for our education, for our well-being, and how many, uh, of them would just pack up and, uh, pack, pack up, pick up and leave?
Well, they are packing up and leaving. They have already packed up and left.
It's a serious, it's a good thing that we are blessed in our area. Of course, we have all stripes and all colors in our area, but basically, we don't, don't have this craziness that they have in, to the extent they have it on the Upper West Side, uh, like socialist ideas on every corner, and people don't live by those ideas. They just want others to follow them, but they are very comfortable working for very capitalist enterprises and raking in good money. But the rest should, should think like Andrew Young says, you get your thousand dollars and shut up. Basically, it is, that's what it is.
The other thing I'll add to that, Yuri, is, um, you know, people, there are a lot of people who complain about our, uh, politicians. For example, on the Upper West Side, uh, people complain a lot, Upper West Side, Upper East Side, people complain a lot about what's going on now, especially because they've been, they've been hit the hardest with the homeless shelters and the needles on the street and the crime. But a lot of them either don't vote, or they vote for the wrong people, right? So they elected Mayor de Blasio.
There's still Obama-Biden in every window, a poster.
Right, so stop voting for the wrong politicians. Stop voting Democrat if you don't want this garbage in your city. But they keep voting in the wrong people, and then they're complaining, or they're not voting. People have to vote, and they have to, uh, you know, educate themselves on the issues, uh, educate themselves on the issues of these politicians, right? And they have to make the right choice when they go and vote, and they have, people have to vote. They cannot just sit and complain about what's going on outside their, back, you know, in their backyard, but not, uh, vote, not participate in, in, in this process.
Inna, let me ask you one of the questions that I, I plan to, to finalize our program with, because we are at forty-five minutes right now, but it's, it's a kind of big, uh, subject probably. Uh, is there a chance that the Republican Party, national, uh, GOP nationally, would start paying attention to support Republicans in New York? Or it's a kind of lost cause for them, and we only can run on whatever we can, uh, collect locally, uh, in donations? Would there be some attention from, from National Republican Committee?
Look, what I can tell you is that right now, we have a really big shot, uh, to win this seat, to flip this seat from Democrats to Republican, this seat, I'm, I'm referring to my seat, the seat that I'm running for. Um, because this district is so conservative. And even though we have a lot of people who are registered Democrats, these Democrats will vote Republican in the general election. A, a lot of these Democrats, registered Democrats, voted for President Trump. This district voted, voted for President Trump sixty-three percent, uh, and above, okay? Uh, so, a- and the registrations, as, you know, we reviewed the numbers, and we can see that registrations switched. They were, uh, more leaning towards Democrats before, but they're now a lot more leaning towards Republicans. So if there is a shot anywhere, um, in, in New York to flip the seat, to take the seat in the city council, it's right here. This is it. This is everyone's, uh, hope. So donate to my campaign so we can fight the progressive left.
Here's the address, вот адрес внизу, Inna V for NYC, Inna V, IV stands for внутривенное вливание, нам нужен этот, этот, это, это поддержка, друзья, ваша поддержка. Мы вливаем новую кровь в жилой политического Нью-Йорка вместе с вами. Огромное спасибо вам за вашу помощь, за то, что слушали. Если вы дали донэйшен, помните, что если вы из Нью-Йорка его дали, то восемь раз город даст столько же денег на пользу Inna Vernikov. Она правильный человек, она правильный кандидат. Задавайте мне ваши вопросы. После программы в форме, uh, Facebooka, например, я, или там на форуме в YouTube, я постараюсь ответить, я отвечаю, наверное, на процентов пятьдесят вопросов, когда добираюсь до них. И, и я вам, я обладаю этой информацией, я вам дам возможность помочь. И не, если у вас возникнет такое желание. Спасибо всем, кто откликнулся. Спасибо канадцам. Я знаю, что вы очень преданные нам, а мы преданные вам люди. Мы стоим одним фронтом на пути вот этого зла, обрушившегося на наши две страны. Прекрасные страны, в которой столько, uh, людей пытаются приехать, чтобы жить счастливо и воспитывать здесь детей. И просто мы должны сделать то, что сделали наши родители в свое время, то, что сделали наши, их родители в наш, в свое время. Каждому поколению выпадает, как говорил Роналд Рейган, завоевать свою свободу. И сейчас это наш момент, потому что свобода не передается больше, чем на одно поколение. Inna. I quoted Ronald Reagan, that liberty is, uh, freedom, uh, is as long, uh, is only, uh, one generation long, right? Every generation gets a chance, whether you want it or not. Uh, you, you, you have to fight for your freedom. And this was the, the trial that, uh, previous generations withstood. Many generations that came with, before us, they gave us, they, uh, brought us into the world that had some freedom, after all. So it's our turn now to, to go and fight. So it's our turn now to, to go and fight and win. And if you feel like donating to the campaign of Ina Vernikov, please, inav4nyc.com, please be there. PayPal, you take PayPal, people are asking?
No, they can only donate either by sending me a check um, or by going on the website to donate directly.
Yeah, I know, but PayPal is, um, yeah, it, it's also the system, the, the, um, the rules of election, they, they have, they, they have to track every donation. That's why they only accept it in certain ways. If it would be discovered that it's an illegal donation, everybody would get in trouble, except the one, I guess, who gave the money. I guess, say, I would get in trouble, Ina would get in trouble. Unnecessary, absolutely. So, dear friends, find a way, but not by donating, uh, find a way to support Ina morally, and we'll talk about it later on in the program. We're gonna have at least one more program. And we'll come, uh, at the top of our game, and we'll be analyzing our, our conversation today, right? What we have to improve to make it easier for people to donate and encourage them to donate, because you are the right candidate. In my eyes, you're the right candidate, and I, I speak on big issues most of the time, but for me, act locally is where it all starts.
Спасибо большое, спасибо всем.
Спасибо всем, дорогие друзья, спасибо, кто пришел. И завтра в одиннадцать тридцать я буду здесь. Всего вам доброго.
Спокойной ночи.
Спокойной ночи, Ina, спасибо. Thank you so very much.